I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome you all to the October voting meeting. We've got Mr. Crager from RBC Capital. I want you to know we're loading for there tonight. We've got an expert here.
He does have a side can, huh?
So he can't pull any more stuff.
Sorry, Scott.
No, no, it's okay. It's good to be back. I guess I can, as the handouts are going around the table, you start with a little bit of background. I was here last, probably this time last year when we were looking to terminate the swap and refinance the existing debt and set the wheels in motion for that process. At the time we went through that process, rates were very, very low. We didn't talk about that in a second. And we had really put up a game plan to accomplish what we did back in December and January, but then to look forward to the next opportunity for the board to refinance. And when Ann and I talked back then, we said, hey, if rates hang in there for us, we can come back and look into another refinancing at the end of 2013, beginning of 2014. So keep your fingers crossed. Well, here we are. We're going to talk about where we've been in the process in terms of interest rates. Hopefully, it's good news, Mr. Scott. You like to come back and deliver good news on the refinancing opportunities. So the first page of the handout speaks to the general trend of interest rates over the last 10 years. Clearly, your timing for what we did last year was very, very good in December and January. Really at the bottom of the market. Earlier this year, May and June, there was the beginning of the talks of when the Fed would exit its monthly purchase of treasuries. They purchased about $85 billion every month in various treasury securities. And as soon as there was the rumor on the street that they were going to stop buying treasuries, the market thought, geez, the economy's going pretty good. And that's going to basically take the foot off the accelerator. And rates went up in pretty dramatic fashion from June until early September. You can see that a little bit more dramatically if you look at page two of the handout, where in June, the 10-year treasury was about 1.7% and ran up to almost 3% in a very, very short period of time. We've since settled back. And the reason we've settled back is when the Fed met in September, they basically said, everything that we told you we're going to do, we're not doing. And now with turmoil in Washington over the debt ceiling and the government shutdown, I think the idea of taper probably is off the table until the first quarter of 2014, which I think presents us with an opportunity to move quickly and get the refinancing completed here in the next couple of months. When I left the office, 10-year treasury was 273. It's moving up over the last week or 10 days because unfortunately, the closer we get to Thursday, which is the deadline day for raising the debt ceiling, there is a outside chance that the federal government doesn't get out of their own way and pay its bills. And that would cause a default, which is a very, very bad thing. So that would cause interest rates generally to go up in a very, not a good way. So I think they're going to resolve that in the next day or so, hopefully, and rates settle down as a result. Because I think as soon as they get past Thursday, then it's back to talking about the economy and its strength, which I think generally speaking is not as strong as we thought it was maybe in the summer of this year. So I'm not going to pay attention to every one of the pages in the handout, but generally, we're talking about refinancing three pieces of your existing debt. The 2009 A-bonds, on page three, there's about $5.4 million of those bonds that we've refinanced. The rates there look pretty attractive, but when you see today's rates, they're better. 3% to 4.15%. Page four is the 2000 C-bonds from 2009. Those were the bonds issued for the roof project. Those bonds are largely out there. 2026, it's 4.15%. And then page five, there's a piece of the 2010 bond issue, about $1.7 million, roughly 3.5%. If we can pay off those bonds, which is shown on page six, in 2015. So what we're talking about here is an advance refunding, meaning we're going to refund those bonds in advance of the call date. It's also the reason why we waited until late 2013 to refinance those '09 and '10 bonds, because thinking about how we refinanced those bonds, we had to set money aside in an escrow account until 2015 until we could call those bonds away from bondholders. Yes, we can borrow with today's low rates of 3%, but the money used in the escrow account remains 0.1%. That negative difference is called negative arbitrage. And that really hurts the efficiency of the refinancing. And so the longer we wait, the rates stay in your favor, and the closer we get to the call date, the more it makes sense to refinance. And so by just simply waiting, the rates generally speaking hang in there for you. We're now able to produce some savings. Page seven is the sources and uses for the new series bonds, roughly $9 million. New bonds will be issued, will pay off those three pieces of your existing debt, pay the associated cost of issuance. Page eight is the new rates. They range from 0.5% up to 3.4%. Close in at other pay areas, up to their pay. Page nine and 10 really is the thunder for the handout, which is, much like we've always done, we pushed all of the savings up in the first two years, where the '13, '14 budget would have about $60,000 of savings in it next year. In the '14, '15 budget, about $130,000 in net of cost of issuance. I've been a little bit conservative in these savings. They're probably, you see the bottom of the page, it's about $190,000, $170,000 present value. When Ann and I first started talking about this, they were more like $240,000 or $50,000. Just in the last week or so, we've seen that back up in rates a little bit. So I wanted to show you something that was live today. And we have 30, 45 days of work to do before we can actually lock in rates. And so we're expecting that to settle back down, to be in the neighborhood of that $240,000 of savings. Page 11, just very quickly. The savings of $170,000 present value, the last three numbers on the page, that's 2% savings. Generally, when we talk about refundings here at Exeter, we like to shoot for 2.5% to 3.5% to three or more percent savings. So when we come back, if you want to proceed, you can come back with a parameters resolution. That will be the time where you pick a target, if you will. We can talk about it that night. But generally, we like to see that savings rate be a little bit higher than 2%. So maybe 2.5% or 2.75% would be a good number. The last thing I want to talk about quickly before I open it up to questions. In keeping with, I know there's some projects that we've been talking about for the past couple of years. And we also like to keep in mind, what are the next refinancing opportunities past this one that you can look to roll in some comparable projects? If you have them, page 12 and 13 are simply the next two pieces of refinancing that we can look at. 2009 B-bonds can be refinanced in the summer of 2014. And we can also, which is on page 12, we can also look at refinancing the remaining balance of the 2010 issue, which is about $12.5 million, which can advance upon those bonds. And so if we look at non-bank qualified issue or maybe waiting until the following December, next December of 2014, that will be another refinancing opportunity for the board to look forward to. We're getting there. So very quickly, I guess, we'd like to bring these ideas to you. It's obviously good news to say 200,000 or 250,000 in light of some tough budgets that all of our school clients are facing. The goal would be to get ready, go out and refresh the rating with the rating agencies. You're double A minus. Hopefully, get that updated pretty quickly with the help of Ann, who can give us some information for us. And then we would come back, the parameters resolution with Peter from Stevens and Lee, next month's meeting. And then you'd be in a position to lock in rates shortly thereafter, once you have the rating in hand, probably three or four weeks from starting the process. So that's the high scoop on a very short version. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Scott, one, we've talked forever, I guess, about the bus garage. With any of these refinancing options, would it be possible, is that even feasible, to be able to roll anything in? And if so, can we do anything with a term as far as, similar to a mortgage, going from 15 to 20 or 20 to 30? As far as the payment, is that, now I know that would be an increased rate the longer we go out. But again, we're looking more at the payment. I know sooner or later, if we decide to do that, we're going to have to bite the bullet. And from a budgetary standpoint, I don't think there's enough dollars in there to handle a significantly higher payment. So I guess my question is, one, if we did come and say, hey, take a look at these options, assuming rates remained, at least in the ballpark of where they are, could we roll additional money in and kind of clean things up and take care of that bus garage if need be? And two, if so, then can we take a look at some different options for possibly a longer repayment from?
Yeah, there's a couple of answers to that question. Yes, we can refinance it, or finance it as part of this package. The total issue size here, and again, we used the bank qualified status for 2013 when we did the funding back earlier in the year. And so there's a, we would like to keep the issue $10 million or less. And this issue would close January 1st. Okay, so we would then be using the bank qualified status for 2014. And so if we rolled in, I know Ann and I have looked at a couple of things. This issue is 8.9 million, so you have $1 million of bank qualified capacity. You can roll in some new money there. In terms of structure, what we've run for Ann today has been a wraparound, much like you've done here in the past, where you would wrap that bus transportation center debt around your existing debt. And that would come with the lowest impact to budget. And your debt, relatively speaking, is fairly short. And so we can look at a number of different options, but my sense is the most efficient option is going to be that wraparound structure. And yes, you can roll it into this issue. One of the things we can do is with the issue, that non-bank qualified, it's maybe a $2 or $2.5 million piece that we can close this year, non-bank qualified, have this refunding, which is more interest rate sensitive, close in January if you wanted to do that. That would be a structuring item. But to answer your question, yes, you can roll it into this. I think we would try and massage the numbers to make it work, bank qualified, non-bank qualified over your end here. And if you need some more time to think about it, certainly you can wait until June of next year to roll it into the next refinancing opportunity. And if you're still not prepared, you can wait until December for your next refinancing opportunity. We did take a look at some of those numbers with Ann, just to see what it might look like. And definitely achieved, I think we achieved a pretty attractive, with a pretty attractive structure to the budget.
Have you done anything or have thought about it? Because I've seen some different places have actually taken on debt to fund the pension issue. Have you looked at that or talked to Ann about that potential? And again, it's not something I would want to do, but there's also the reality of the situation.
We have done it. We've done it places that have significant unfunded pension liabilities, 50, 7500, $1 million at a time, and much larger. There are efficiencies in doing it. I don't know what your unfunded liability is. My sense is you're not in a place where, I wouldn't recommend it here either, but it certainly take a look at for you. We've not done it for a school in Pennsylvania yet.
It's going to be about $5 million a year soon.
Right, but there still is pension exception.
Right. Well, that still isn't good.
It's a different animal for a school, as you know, in terms of other folks with large unfunded liabilities. One of the criticisms of Detroit is they find that their significant unfunded liability didn't, hindsight's gone to blind. Didn't work out as they expected it to. But we've done many of those refinances. Again, we have to look at it for that's interesting.
Thanks.
Now, you said something about, can you, how would we get to upgrade our AA?
Your rates, double A minus? That's a great, great question. We are going through this. I was at Twin Valley last night. I'm going to be at Wilson on Monday night. And all are very, you know, three Ferguson County school districts that are very different credits. Wilson's a double A minus, like you, probably closer to an upgrade to a double A. Twin Valley is an A on a negative watch. What you can do to upgrade your, your double A minus to a double A, I think you took some steps last year to refine and get out of your interest rate swap. Generally speaking, the interest rate swap in variable rate debt is kind of one of the boxes that they check that could be viewed as a negative by the rating agency. I'll tell you that the more cash you have, fund balance, that is, that leads the charge. And so cash is, the more cash you have in your fund balance, they like that a lot. Other than that, you do a very, very good job in other areas, you know, financial management. Ann and I talked about that today. You get good grades for that. You pay your debt back relative to your peers fairly quickly. You don't have an overwhelming amount of debt relative to some of your peers. And so those are the things you can do to get to the double A category. My sense is you're not quite there yet. You're moving in the right direction. Clearly, you don't have a lot of building projects on the horizon, whether that's behind you and weather this economic storm that we've seen over the last five or six years. So the double A minus is fantastic. Don't feel bad about double A minus. That is a fantastic rating relative to most of your school district peers in the Commonwealth.
But you're higher in the rating than the less your interest rate is.
Exactly.
So say, so the next level up would be AA?
That would be just double A. Your double A minus, then you would go to double A.
So over the cost of, like, over the years of, say, you're borrowing 10 million. And you have a 20-year bond or something. So what, if, from a double A minus to a double A, what would your interest savings be about?
About, it's, on $10 million, it's meaningful. It's hundreds of thousands of dollars. You know, you're talking about probably 10 to 20 basis points difference. Meaning that if your double A minus interest rate is 3.5%, your double A rating is maybe 3.30, 3.35. And so it doesn't sound like a lot, but a quarter percent on 20 or 30 million dollars in debt is, over the 20-year period, is a pretty meaningful amount.
That's right.
Yep, big number.
Do we get that higher rating a few years back? Is that right?
Yeah, you've been heading in the right direction. I think you went from an A-plus to a double A minus not that long ago.
And the reason for that fall in the race was because of?
No, it wasn't. No one, it was a fraud.
We went, we went.
We weren't high, we weren't, I thought that when all this messing around was by nonstandard course, that they became more conservative in our ratings. And we've gone to them to say, we should have a better rating than what they've given us because we're still finding it to sound. So I couldn't remember what the rating was before.
Yeah, I believe most recently, you got an upgrade to double A minus from A-plus. And that was largely because they were changing their criteria in how they view schools. They're going through a change in what they call their methodology at the moment. Like, you've been heading in the right direction with the things that we've been doing over the last, you know, since we've been here in the last 10 years, for sure. So yeah, I think the last thing that we did was get an upgrade to double A minus. You know, and we did at that time think you were maybe, you know, in the camp that should have gotten double A.
Yes.
And we were fighting for a double A. And we've, we put your rating report next to Fleetwood's, who's a double A, which, no offense to Fleetwood, I'm surprised that Fleetwood, as small as they are, gets a double A. Wilson is surprised by the fact that they're double A minus. And you're a double A minus, you never know what, and analysts all have different approaches too. So we're going to try and push them here, and we're going to try and push them on Wilson also. You go in the right direction. But again, I think your outlook is right. I mean, you're not going in the wrong direction.
True. No, I understand that. I just find it interesting.
It is. It's tough for somebody in New York sometimes to really understand an extra school district. So we like to, from time to time, bring here and visit, be a hand, generally wins the day.
I remember you saying that, actually. I appreciate that.
How much debt do we currently have, folks, right now? Because we have an outstanding amount of funds.
How close to 800?
What, of course, 800.
Glad you had that, you didn't have?
Two and a half schools.
Yeah. That's true.
And what is our approximate average cost of assets?
I do have that. And I'm going to make a guess here, but you're in probably all of your debt, all in probably the 3, you hit 3, you know, 3.75% range, pretty darn good. And we refinanced a lot of your debt in January, not in March.
And I don't know how you folks think about something as commonly discussed as maturity. You know, I mean, you talk about a duration or internally, on what the approximate duration of maturity of the debt is.
Uh, I don't want to tell you the average life. The duration is on your last, on the summary page for this debt refinancing. The average life of the bonds, the funding is 7.2 years. You don't have this in front of you, but I can show it to you. This is your existing, your existing debt holdback. And so you're out of debt, you know, 27. Your debt's fairly level weighted, so that's probably an average life of half of that issue. So it's fairly aggressive payback. And it's one of the things to, to the rating agency folks, if you read your rating report, they like the fact that your average paydown is pretty aggressive versus yours. So yes, we, average life is important, duration of your debt is fairly short.
Leonie, I would say, and again, I serve more temporarily on this board at this point, but my hope would be that you would consider to lengthen your average maturities, your duration of your debt holdings. My personal take is that Scott's chart was fantastic over a 10-year period, but if you take a look over a 20- or 30-year period, it's more dramatic. And right now, we're talking about 10 or 20 basis points as if it were something. My guess is that, and I realize this sounds like a forever, but in 10 or 20 years, if you're telling people that you have coupons on these bond issues of 4% or slightly north of 4%, everybody will be walking around, who says at this table, the gold star? Because rates will be double or triple what they are now. So, you know, my thought is, and again, this may not be before to have this discussion, but I think refunding is a phenomenon that takes place in an environment where rates are generally going down. And Exeter's paying a premium to have that refunding option in its debt?
Right, most school district debt is issued with, you know, it's bank qualified, it's issued a five-year call. Some of the larger stuff that you get early in the year had a 10-year call, some of it had a 7-year call, so.
Do you find that without the call, the debt becomes a lot more expensive for the district?
It is not, believe it or not. We have found over the last 30 years that the general shape of the yield curve is positively sloped. And so if you have a five-year call on this piece of debt, for example, and rates are fairly static, and right now the yield curve is fairly steep. And so if you get to year five with a five-year call, your refinancing was 1 to 5, your rate was 1-year rate. Or even if rates were 5 to 75 basis points, there's still some juice that can squeeze out in refinancing. That, we found out, weighs the benefit of going non-call or 10-year call. The call premium is, if that's in the school world, it's very much in Exeter's school district's favor to have the five-year call, is what we found. Now, to your point, I think everyone, if we're going to look back in the next 7, 10 years, you know, rates are higher for 7 or 10 years. And if you can look at your debt coupon and say, geez, we have $80 million of debt for an average coupon of 3.75% or 4%, you hit a home run. But there's, one of the beauties of having the call is not only your ability to refinance, but we're not sure what the next 10 years will, for schools under Act 1. And so your ability to make a restructure. Who knows if you need that flexibility, but in this flexibility, you can refund your debt or restructure your debt, even for a little bit of budget relief. And so that said, we think it's worth it to have a five or a seven-year call. And we, I'm happy to show you that math, but it's generally been pretty cheap.
And to your point before, I mean, again, I would be very open and encourage everyone to have a discussion about using bond funding for unfunded pension liabilities. I think it's, it may be one of the cheapest ways to fund that going forward. And I appreciate your comment on Detroit, but I think that is a very different situation. But I think if you can borrow at the rates that you are seeing now and fund some of that increase that's going to be coming down the road to pension costs, you're going to be doing it at a cost, a financial cost and a taxpayer psychology cost that's going to be much more positive than you would.
Well, you're going to also see, again, too, we're going to be playing the budget game. And one of the things we're going to have to look at is, one, if some of this debt does go away, it's going to be stretched out a little bit, we incur. You know that pension's not going to go away, the pension costs, and there's still going to be a point that we're going to have to continue to put back in. So we're going to have the debt and then also, two, the pension. We may be able to kind of grind our way through it. But on the next, the next refunding, and I know we typically kept it a short term, and we have a lot of short-term debt. I really think we need to look at paying a little bit of a premium, going longer, and then really taking a look, like Jim, you know, as far as you know better than anybody here, as far as, what we need to do to facilities and possibly look to wrap it in and maintain or even lower the payment. Because when you look at it, again, too, our population, I don't think we're going to see any huge flight, at least in the near term. And a water creek is brand new and rip is still pretty new. And the senior high, we put a lot of money into. So when you look at it, I don't see any huge capital projects. It's going to be more of the maintenance, the maintenance of our house. So I think we kind of have to take a look at this next batch of, looking at the next five, 10, 15 years in the budget, knowing that what Ann talks about all the time with the pension, insurance is not going down. And there's just certain things that we're going to have to look at. Because we're just not going to be on Nick or Don, our way out of it. And that's why I asked about the pension. Then it's something that, it's different, but it's something we may want to consider. Because regardless, we see the charts, we will have to pay for it.
Any questions or comments?
And the last thing, I guess I would, I would ask is, I realize that there is a lot on the agenda, but we don't know when the market's going to decide that these abnormally low interest rates are, abnormally low, and have another summer phenomenon, and have Scott come back and say, well, you know what? When I came in, we should have done something in a couple of months, because now it's 50 or 75 basis points more expensive.
Well, I think as soon as the Fed comes back on tape with, you know, for at least March to winter, and start taper, rates will back up in April. I think six or eight months from now, I think 10-year treasuries, we have a minimum of 3.5%. I think you have a window, I was hoping to make that clear, I think we have a window here we have a window here going into year end to get the refinancing done. I think to your point, I don't know if that plays into the, the discussion at next month's meeting when we do the parameters, what target you set. Any savings is good savings when, you know, you put two hundred thousand dollars for the bottom line, net of costs, and that's only two percent savings, while in the past, you've liked to get two and a half or three or three and a half percent savings. This may be the last bite of that apple for refinancing, to your point, I hear you. I think we have a window, who knows? I mean, we'll make sure up next month and it's, the savings are gone.
Well, we were, we were at one point six percent in May or June. Now we're at two point seven-three. So we've lost a hundred, there's a hundred and ten basis point jump, and a hundred basis points was in one month.
Right.
I mean, we literally, if someone called for a mortgage at ten o'clock, the rate could have been different at eleven, and then it could have been different at twelve. That's how quick it was moving. It was just reprice, reprice, reprice. So it's, it's one of those things, too, where I think collectively, collectively, we're going to have to take a look at it, because I agree with Tim and Scott, the window, the window is going to be much shorter. And if it, if it does go back down again, then we're really in trouble.
We'd like to move quickly, you know, back in, in November, through the parameters, to be able to lock in rates shortly thereafter, take advantage of, who knows what happens between now and then, but I think we do have a little bit of time here. The turmoil in Washington's kind of focused on that table a little bit. It's going to be back to focusing on, you know, the economic numbers that we haven't seen, literally, in two weeks, because the government's been shut down.
So, did I misunderstand? You said we could do this in January, or in June, or in?
This piece we can do now. As soon as the market holds for us, we would lock in rates in late November, early December, but it wouldn't settle until January first. That's just a timing thing with closing your bank-qualified status. Your next opportunity for other pieces of your debt come in the summer of 2014, and then later in 2015.
Those pieces are not, you can't expect right now, it's very far. Okay, now.
This first piece, we're going to move as quickly as we can.
So Joe, as far as the large capital projects we had talked about, one was the bus garage. I think the number we threw around discussed was somewhere in that two and a half to three million for construction for that. That would encompass the building and be able to do our paving that we needed for our facility as of now. If we did a merger down the line, that would just really be an expansion of parking area. The building itself would still have to be as built, wouldn't be changing in size or scale. The other major project we have that we're discussing right now is we need to replace the sports field. It's added the service life of roughly around ten years. We're starting to develop tears in there. We're starting to look at the safety of the students and the players on there. So that's roughly around a million dollars. I think in that neighborhood, eight hundred to a mo-, eight hundred thousand to a million, two I know of. So you had spoken about having about a million and a half in flexibility right now, Scott, I think. How do we play that into a three and a half million dollar need, or does that wrap into something we already have set aside inside of our other capital?
No, I think, if you have three or three and a half million dollars of needs, and you wanted to go get that now, take advantage of current rates, you may not need dollars right now, but in six months from now, or a year from now, I think we could do it now. The way we would skim that cap would be, we would borrow as much as we can to settle January, keep the ten million or less, because rates, bank-qualified rates are more attractive. And we would just, we would be part of it to settle in December of this year, if we could do it quickly enough. Whether it's nine or two, and we'll be non-bank-qualified. There's a little bit higher rate, it's new money, and so it's not interest rate sensitive. And again, different between bank-qualified and non-bank-qualified, it's probably a twenty-five basis points. That hurts, but we're funding it now, so it doesn't necessarily, you know, long-term, it's not a huge number in terms of your overall borrowing costs for that three or three and a half million. So if you said, yeah, Scott, we want to see some numbers at next month's meeting for three or three and a half million, we could certainly show up with some different options and structures, and you can, you can pick from the menu as to what you want to do, whether it's just refunding, you're refunding plus nine, you're funding plus three, and we can make that happen before year end, if that's okay.
When you do that, I, I would like to see the different term options.
Yeah.
And I understand that there's going to be price sensitivity to longer terms. But again, too, we're playing the budget game. Really, I think what we need to look at is, what are going to be the long-term capital projects? And I don't see a building in this school, and that's the biggest one. We know we're going to have to do the, the regular maintenance. But what we can afford to do is just suck that entire fund dry, which we're going to be there, what, three, four years in, based on current projects?
The capital project money?
Would you say?
Oh, sure. Yeah, the available money and the commitments that we have.
So if we, if we were able to restructure debt, take it out, extend that particular term on that one service, and keep the payment the same, and maintain what we have in our fund, it may overall help us as we kind of massage our way through the next couple of budget cycles.
Would we want to include, talk about, you know, pension, our pension obligation in this, this fund?
I, I need to speak with Scott about that. I guess I'm a little bothered by that, the pension mention. I think looking at the capital projects that are coming up, we have roof replacements coming up, those make a lot of sense to issue debt because of the light that's the same. So I want to talk more about that whole concept of pension. Again, you know, we haven't looked at the budget yet for fourteen, fifteen, although you saw projections for five years during last year's budget process. So, you know, weighing, I, I need to understand what you're really saying about funding the pension obligation through issuing debt versus taking advantage of the exception that's available, and raising your mileage to pay for a portion of that increase in your pension obligation, build it into your mileage. So I think we need to evaluate more things. Now, as far as the bus garage, I think the decision has to be made whether we are, definitely, if you, if district decides to go ahead with the merger, we definitely need a bus garage. Right now, we can get by with what we have. So there has to be a decision made, are we going to definitely need it, or do we definitely want to do it? We have to have a plan. And once you issue debt for projects, you have to move ahead, that's what we're going to use those funds.
Yeah, Peter's going to want to know that you have a, this is a second project that you're going to finance with the block person, that's for sure. And the downside, again, if you're not going to use the money quickly, borrowing it, yeah, you're borrowing it at three and a half percent, but it's going to sit the bank earn zero. So it's got a negative drag, so you don't want to do it too soon. You know, that's, that's balance. How quickly do you think rates get away from you, and does that outweigh the negative arbitrage of the other investments?
You've mentioned that now twice, about investing it at a negative rate. Is, is there a legal requirement that forces you into a particular type of instrument when you borrow?
Well, for the refunding, well, I think it's permitted investment of the school to, but for refinancing, the other estimates is treas-, basically treasuries or what are called state-level government securities or slugs, which are used to fund those escrow accounts. And so they're very short-term instruments that are used. And you defuse prior debt, you guys, for the setup, that's people.
But something beyond a refunding bond could be invested in something other than a very low-yielding instrument. You could actually get a part of positive arbitrage on borrowing.
Uh, no. Well, you can, if, A, I'm not sure there's an instrument out there that's permitted investment of the money to earn more than three and a half percent per month for something three years or less. Because you've got to spend the money within three years. As a school, when you borrow, you get three years to spend it. If you're a small issuer, I mean, you're borrowing less than ten million a year, capital projects, you get an exemption. But again, you still have to spend the money. You have to have a reasonable expectation, you borrow tax-dipped, you're going to spend it, going out even three or five years on the yield curve, that's a gap, so you have three and a half percent. Ten-year treasury's two seventy. So you can see what you get going out in ten years. Those are generally the, we have investments as treasuries, agencies, federal government, at the point, that's, that's really a lot of this. Any other questions? In the escrow account, that's an inefficiency. The escrow is also an inefficiency if you, if you borrowed money out, but spent it for three years, you borrowed three and a half and invested, call it fifty basis points, or an average life, an average life for three years is, you know, one and a half. That's a one-year treasury, one and a half treasury business. Can you talk about the positive benefit to taxpayers, like Colin, is that because you would have to increase mileage?
Well, that's, you know, that's what my point here, and it would be that this part of the board, I think, one of the things that we want to do, and I know that you folks do, is think about minimizing mileage increases. And I'm just wondering if refunding something like unfunded pension liability doesn't, within a very reasonable period of time, earn its money back relative to mileage increases.
Yeah, I would have, you know, I was having a hard time grasping that.
How would that work with the restrictions from Act One?
How would that work?
How, does the restrictions from Act One play into this conversation?
What's a good debt ceiling?
It's a couple of.
It is a pain into a corner where you have no place to go.
I, well, our debt ceiling is.
You got plenty of debt, it's really.
Capacity, but.
Yeah, the pension for schools is different from someone like Council, for example, who owe their own pension liability. They have, you know, police and the fire, that's different from what you have, which is your obligations to the, to the bigger state system. You know, where I thought you were going was, what some schools have looked at is not necessarily the NMO and the structure we use for the city of Detroit or other large unfunded liabilities would be to, if your pension obligation next year is going up twenty-something percent, that's a five or six ninety-dollar increase to what your budget gave from last year for pension obligations. What we have seen is, to take advantage of the yield curve, is to, what we call scoop the funding. And so you scoop out some portion of your next year's debt, principal and interest, and put it out again. So you've taken your duration, you expect the debt, put the rates yourself low again, and it allows you to fund next year's payment, maybe the following year's payment, which are big numbers, five, seven million, eight million dollars at a time, on a long-term basis. And it basically puts a whole other budget, I don't like to say it's sort of kicks the can down the road, but, but to your point, it kicks a can down the road in a very attractive interest rate that would otherwise be more advantageous to your cash situation at the moment. And so, long-term, in theory, you could do that more efficiently than what your cash will earn over time, or the benefits of having the cash in your pocket over time. That's generally the, how that math works following. That's, that's the only thing I can think of in terms of your, because again, you're, again, you're part of a much bigger animal, that the state is, the government is looking to, maybe already has, fund its liability or some part of its liability for those same reasons, which is their, you know, the period rate on their retirement is, is lower than what they think they can earn over time, and what are different investments for that, and they're going out. And they do have an equity portfolio, an fixed income portfolio, that's funding their, one of the reasons why it's unfunded, it performed for over the last ten years. But, you know, that's a story for another day. That, that would be a way of, that we can talk about. Some folks have looked at that, I'm not sure, one or two may have utilized that structure.
And how many years do we need to do this unfunding to catch up? Have the state said anything?
Well, it'll be up to thirty, uh, thirty percent, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, and it will stay at that rate.
How many years are they saying?
Twenty-five.
About thirty years.
It's twenty-five years till you catch up?
Yeah, off the top of my head, it's a long period.
Ben will still hail the board.
That is the only gift that will know that.
Anything else, Mr. Scott?
Thank you.
So we'll talk, and we'll come back next month with some various funding options. I would envision Pew, we come back to that meeting, we would have parameters that would allow us to do whatever we like.
Thanks, Scott.
Yep. Take care.
Hello, is there anyone who would like to make a statement for the board? If not, then we have four sets of minutes up for approval. I'll entertain a motion without a.
Second.
Motion, and a second to approve the minutes. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, I'm going to adjourn with the report as, uh, put it.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor approving the report, please indicate somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have two board, two policies to consider. The first being on school volunteers. We've had two readings on that. Are we ready to approve?
I move to approve the policy.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, so go ahead.
Just on the first page, third paragraph at the bottom, which is just a, to, volunteers shall not be asked to assume the professional.
Oh, yes, I see it.
Are there any other corrections or comments?
Is policy nine sixteen, not nine twenty-six?
Oh, good question. Yeah, it's labeled nine sixteen. That was, that was probably a typo in the typing of the board agenda, I would assume, rather than typing, a typo in the typing of the actual policy. We will double-check on that to make sure we have the duration correct.
So we're now considering the policy nine sixteen as correct.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the corrected policy, please indicate somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This is the first reading of the policy six oh nine point one. We'll be covering that again next month. Are there any comments on that policy now?
Could I just say on the summer page, everyone, just try and sort of better understand the policy.
Breaking was a tradition, for us on this train.
Is high expectation. Is high expectation for this page.
Just a couple words. Bond counsel, Peter Edgell, Stevens, like, you wrote this policy, recommendation to us over a year ago, well over a year ago. I put it on the back burner, we talked about it at business function last year. I was really hoping there would be some simple versions come out about this. But in any event, we probably need to move ahead with this, because, number one, the IRS wants issuers to have this type of policy procedures in place. And there's a form that we sign when we issue that, and we may be doing that in the near future. And one of the, it's the Form eighty W A Information Return with all tax exempt government obligations. So they ask, do you have procedures and policies? where they ask, do you have procedures and policies in place? We haven't been checking that box off because we haven't. Then they come a time when they start looking at that, and who knows what could be ordered. And the rating agencies also have an expectation for compliance policies being in place and debt management. So really what it comes down to is making sure that district's administration or the people that we consult that are tracking bond proceeds, tracking expenditures, investing the proceeds properly, and making sure that if a, you know, you get to a point after the applicable temporary period, which Scott talked about, three years of spending that money for a particular project, and then yield restriction and requirements. And the point Scott made about the tax code basically was put into place so that removing the incentive to issue debt earlier than needed, leave debt outstanding longer than necessary, or issue more debt than necessary for governmental purpose. So encouraging expenditures for the governmental purpose of debt issuance. So you have to have a plan, that was the point I was trying to make, definitive project. So you also have to monitor private use. You issue debt, tax advantaged debt, and you want to keep that status over the life of the issue, you really have to limit the private use, which would include, I have to monitor the leases that we would have out there. For example, we have a lease here with Manitow. Of course, this building is paid off, and, but those are the types of things you have to look at. Facility use, you have to look at naming rights. Whenever you bring in a food service management company or transportation, you really, those contracts have to be crafted in such a way that, you know, you are limiting that private use. So that's an obligation that you have to do under this compliance policy. Rebate obligations, I talked about arbitrage, I have an explanation there, you can take some time to read that. And we, again, consult with bond counsel or our investment advisors on monitoring all that. Disclosure, we're required annually to post our budget and financial statements to Emma, which is the electronic municipal market access website. Anytime there's an event that occurs, we have to post that as well, so that the bondholders can see, you know, what's going on financially as well as any notices. For example, the IRS was auditing on different entities, their basis swaps a few years ago. We had to post that notice as well as the results of what they found. Documentation, required to keep all records for at least six years, hard copy and electronic, anything that really relates to any of these, these issuances. Peter has a couple additions or changes that have come about since he sent this to us many months ago, and the next draft will include those. So that's general summary of the reason for the deal, this policy, just to comply in order to keep the tax exempt expenses over the life of the property.
So it sounds as though our charge is to review the policy in the light of the attempted cheapness. Discuss the question. For the record, I do have to announce that we had an executive session discussing personnel matters. Business functions, Mrs. Scott.
I move that the Board of School Directors authorize district administration to execute an E-Rate consulting services agreement for E-Rate year 2014-2015 with the Berks County Intermediate Unit and annual fee of $4,500. E-Rate program provides an average discount of 50% of telecommunications bills. It's an attachment 6A.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor approving the E-Rate, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of School Directors authorize district administration to execute a one-year agreement with Ohio Pile Print Inc., granting a non-exclusive right and a license to use the school name and logo on apparel and accessories to be sold to local retailers and consumers. The school district will receive 7% of the net sales invoiced to Ohio Pile Print. Each quarter, the quarter of the receipts could be between $10 and $100. That's an attachment 6C.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion.
No, I, I just don't think I can support this idea, and I can't give you a rationale for it except that, I know, it's really bad news. I, I've got this feeling in my backfield, but I had, I had read this article, and I was trying to find it, written about school districts being very careful that who used their logo or their name on, on anything that was any credit commercial use. And Russ picked it up last week and said, you know, we should make sure that we know what they're doing. So I'm sure you're all going to agree to this, and I chalk it up to being squirrely old lady. I just can't quite agree to doing this, and for this small amount of money that it is, I don't think it's worth it.
I had suggested that we might consider adding to each of these documents just a little language, the effect that the licensee agrees that it will not utilize the school's name, nickname, logo, et cetera, in a manner inconsistent with the school's public education mandate.
We did that, we did some of that, too.
And that, I thought, might take it over your hump.
Well, but who's going to watch for that? Because how are we going to find out about? I don't know, and I...
Well, I think that it's a, it's a local business in Exeter, and if any of our parents, teachers, whomever shop there, would see our spirit wear displayed and see something that would be contrary to our mission and our, you know, our good judgment, then I think they'd let us know about it right away. You know, I mean, we're not going to put these out all over the place. And I think it gives our families an opportunity to, to see our name, you know, when they're out shopping, and to encourage them to buy things, you know, feeling a sense of pride out of Exeter. I don't, I just don't think it's a bad idea, and the, you know, these companies have been in business for a long time, and they wouldn't be doing this if they were to misuse or disrepresent our, our good name. I, I don't really see that as a, as a big issue. I mean, you see this all the time, and I've never once seen anything offensive or, you know, with other school districts and so forth. I, I think it's, you know, we may not make a lot of money out of it, but, you know, it gets our name out there, and perhaps a few more people buying things for our logo on it. I don't see a downside to it, Carol. I know what you're saying, but...
I, I understand, and I, and I appreciate your comments, actually.
And I, I think John's add is a cautionary anecdote.
Yeah.
Should be able to shore it, even for a story.
I was going to say, you're not that old, Carol.
Thank you.
But she has bad elbow.
Not elbow, it's just not worth it.
I didn't say like, but it's squirrely.
He was going to me, he didn't actually say it.
Yeah, I, I just want to know, I know Ohio Pile is out there in the far western part of our state, and, and I was just wondering, don't we have any, I think, manufacturing closer to Berks County that we could, you know, use as a resource as compared to, you know, I'm glad, I'm glad this stuff doesn't talk to China.
Yeah.
But I'm serious about that.
I don't know anything about this business, but I'm assuming that that's the business the retailer uses for this purpose. Right, where they do have.
These people, these, actually, it's not that...
Right, exactly.
I know, I know that, but what I'm saying, is there, is there any, I mean, I remember Berks County used to be, and Reading used to be like the, one of the, you know, the manufacturers of, of all kinds of clothing at one time, but do we still have, is there anyone, I think someone...
We use a lot of the local businesses for our own printing, for our own purposes, when we are going out and having something printed, but this would be the retailer having this done, and I'm sure this is who they work with, I'm assuming, because I don't...
Oh, we said we don't have any retailer, and we don't have, oh, you mean the retailers here?
Right, right, like Walmart.
No, I'm not, I'm not one of them, I'm not one of them.
Ken, they, they just really have a distribution network. I mean, there's no point in having boxes of clothing if there's not a distribution network to sell.
Oh, exactly, that's what this is.
And Ohio Pile negotiates these national contracts, or at least statewide contracts, and they can be in these stores, they're paying the fee to be in there. A local person that makes shirts wouldn't have the ability to make an agreement because they're too small.
Oh, I see.
I mean, that's where the, that's where the volume comes in.
Right.
I think they should be able to give us a better percentage of profit there.
Believe it, believe me. For these, Carol, there's not a lot of cushion, and the fact that you get 7%, I mean, when you look, when you look at that number, you're like, oh, that's not a lot of money. But you're taking zero risk, you have no, no manufacturing, you have no labor, you have no nothing.
You don't have to do anything for it.
The bottom, the bottom line is, is we're saying, okay, you can use our name, and we're going to make some money in a one-year period, and we can take a look and see if it makes sense. We don't make any money, no big deal, or it could lead to something more. And so, I would say for a year with the, with John's clause in there, I think we're fine.
Any further discussion?
Twenty questions, how old are the logos? Is that a registered trademark? Would we have it, or is that just a free, for, thing that owns somebody else? What do you think?
Eagle, but I saw the RPC eagle, too. I thought, where did that come from?
I mean, eagles own their, like, the, full of eagles, own their own eagle, full of fillies, own the name fillies, you can't use the name fillies. So is this eagle really our property, like you're saying, or does it belong to somebody else? We stole it? Just asking a question.
Well, I'm not saying we stole it, but I mean, we have the eagle in all different forms, but see, as I said, RPC has it, we have the wannemaker eagle, we've got a lot of different eagles around there.
The eagle that we're using now was designed by John White, and prior to that, we were using eagles for our defined areas, but this one is specifically designed by John for the district. Is it officially registered somewhere?
You might want to just consider doing that just for protection, because then if somebody fringes on it, then...
And they can't say we infringed on that.
Any further discussion on the issue?
And as silly as that sounds, where I lived in Iowa, my alma mater, the University of Wisconsin, stopped the local high school from using a W because it did infringe on the University of Wisconsin's W.
I always loved the University of Wisconsin.
But is it the district's property, or is it John White's property?
No, he, he gave it to the...
Okay.
All right, we're voting on one-year contract with Ohio Pile Print. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You changed my mind, actually, I'm going to go for a year. I turned my, my left elbow.
Your elbow.
But I appreciate the comment, I, I knew that, I read that, and I saw that in the, in the agreement, and I, so I appreciate that you put it in there, and feel that, you know...
Melissa, you're not that old.
Pardon me? Um, Dr. President, John, how, how do we go about doing something like that?
You mean registering it?
Yeah.
Uh, I'd have to take a look at it, I mean, I'm not quite convinced, but what, what it would take, but I'll...
It's, uh...
You're probably more familiar than I would be, so...
Well, it's, it's not exactly my area, especially.
It's not that difficult. It's not that difficult, if we're on the seat, on with the agenda.
Let's do this again. I move that the Board of School Directors authorize district administration to execute a one-year agreement with Pile Industries Inc., granting a non-exclusive right and a license to use the school name and logo on apparel and accessories to be sold to local retailers and consumers. The school district will receive 8% of the net sales invoiced to Pile Industries each quarter. That's an attachment 6C.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. We keep making more on that, hearing no, discussion. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Dr. Miller.
I move the Board of School Directors approve the retirement of Robert Victor, IT technician, effective November 1st, 2013. Second.
Motion and second, discussion. All in approval of Mr. Victor's retirement, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I move the Board of School Directors approve the following resignations listed under Part B, Number One, Certified Staff A, B, C, and D, and Number Two, Support Staff, Letter N. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following appointments listed under Part C, Number One, Administrative Staff, Number Two, Substitute Teachers, and Number Three, Support Staff. Second.
Motion and second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the appointments listed, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following requests for leave of absences listed under Part B, Number One, A, B, and C. Second.
Motion and second, discussion. All in favor of approving the leaves of absence, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following requests for a change of status, listed under Part E, Number One, Certified Data Staff, Number Two, Support Staff.
Motion and second, discussion. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors approve the following staff conferences listed under Part F, Number One through 15 on the main agenda, and Number 16 on the agenda.
Go ahead, the second.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion.
I have a question, I'm sorry, number five. Are we going to be very, I see they're not bearing any cost, is this going to be K4500 left, or any?
Yeah, they're paying for the entire, transportation to...
And do you have an idea?
Well, I just put a, I'm taking Justin Farland down, it's with the train ticket on my credit card, it's like $500 or $450 or something, just the train, I don't know what the hotel's going to...
Any further discussion on the conferences? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And a complete personnel.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Mrs. Ketchkill.
Item A, just before the 60 mile radius, you're looking through. Do you know that one, the junior achievement? Is that the, do you know if that program's been at the high school for a while? I talked to someone for junior achievement, I don't know if this is the same.
If you recall, I think Mr. Kane spoke to that, was that the last meeting, or was that last meeting?
Yeah, he, he said that...
Yeah, he was saying that one of his teachers, Michelle Kuzelitz, either had gotten in touch with the person, or was planning to do it, I think he said had gotten in touch.
She apparently had been working with him over the years. We just were not officially affiliated with the program.
Right, okay, but we, we don't know which, do you know, what class does she?
She is a, she is a learning support teacher, special education.
Item B, I move the following trip, which is beyond the 60 mile radius, be approved. Senior high school orchestra students to attend New York City on May 23rd, 24th.
No, the second.
That's weird.
Yeah, it is. They're waiting up, so.
Discussion.
Wait a second. No, I said second, and I said, the praising just here.
That's what I know.
So, what are they doing in New York City? Just going to Tennessee and saying-
They're holding their hand.
Not in this city.
Further discussion? All in favor of approving the senior high school orchestra trip to New York City on May twenty-third, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The orchestra will travel to New York City to participate in a masterclass tour, masterclass. Tour Manhattan and see a Broadway show. I'm not sure exactly what a masterclass is, but-
Given by a master.
It's gonna excuse to go to New York City.
Oh, there you go.
You can keep your education. It's like, it's called masterclass.
Tour Manhattan and see a Broadway show. It's all musical, I mean.
I know that the-
Yes, I assumed it was.
The school board never got to go to a show.
All right, guys, collegiate.
Maybe a chat.
Watch out, she's using it one more again.
Continue.
I know that, uh, the senior high school, uh, students participate, participating French students, uh, be approved, trip, be approved to travel to Paris as part of exchange program, starting on March twenty-eighth, twenty fifteen, returning on April eighth, twenty fifteen, and we all know that therefore you're actually going to a French class.
Second.
Second.
All right.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the, that Justin Palatuzzi, senior, has been, uh, been given permission to attend, um, elementary, senior high schools and non-resident students for the remainder of the year, according to policy two, two.
Second.
You have to involve-
Oh, I'm sorry, just for, we already-
I'm, 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 all right, correct, correct, okay, all right, moving to the agenda. I move that the Board of School Directors approve the adoption of the settlement agreement and release in a sum not to exceed seventy-three thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars, which is representative of existing future tuition fees effective the remainder of the twenty thirteen, fourteen school year through the conclusion of the twenty fourteen, fifteen school year for student number two zero one one six eight in a form acceptable to the solicitor to provide for exceptional students' education. Settle and compromise all claims raised by the student and parents that authorize the Board President and Secretary to execute that settlement agreement and release on behalf of the district.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Carol. Mr. Dean, the curriculum.
Joe, report. Curriculum committee next. This curriculum, further into this.
I was issuing a blanket statement.
Oh, I'm sorry, fine, okay. Curriculum committee, at our last meeting, I thought there was a, it was an excellent presentation, or a conversation about credits, and, and adjusting the credit requirements for graduation, and I just thought that when you bring it to all, and that people look at it with an open mind, certainly is not, it's not about less, it's about some flexibility with some of the changes as far as testing and, uh, still on the part of the, of the classes. But, it's, it was very interesting, this topic. And, uh, our next meeting is November fourth. Excuse me, when was that? November fourth.
Just for a moment, where the student forum is going ahead in the high school, for the students to discuss this, the, uh, change in the, in the, um, recruiting credits.
That was one of the discussion topics last Friday afternoon.
All right.
Technology Committee, uh, we do not have an appointed representative, but, uh, we will combine some technology equipment with meeting on five thirty. What quarter is that?
Fourth, right?
Yeah.
ECIU. I have nothing to say about that. No, they, they're just not doing anything, they're talking about their money and, uh, and stuff with their, with their money. Athletic committee.
We had a meeting, um, about a week or so ago. I didn't have thorax, and so I was looking at it, so, uh, maybe we'll have those, uh, probably the next week or so. Some highlights, uh, golf, Ryan Miranda, Elise Vicki qualified for District Three, went down to Briarwood, New York, and played. Uh, the girls volleyball team is currently undefeated, and they're starting the county playoffs. Uh, the boys soccer team, uh, was unfortunately lost to Wilson tonight in the county semifinals, one nothing, but, uh, my, my son, Mister, would have let me know. Um, football teams are five and two, doing well. Cross country, uh, the individual championship is tomorrow, Georgetown. Girls tennis, Dad, would you like to give, would you like to give the rundown?
Won a semifinals game in, uh, districts, uh, play for the district championship tomorrow, and, uh, have an automatic berth into states. I believe it is the first for girls tennis.
Yeah, we do think it's, that's the first, uh-
Very nice.
Where will that be?
Hershey.
Hershey?
Hershey at three fifteen.
That's it, on, on the sports side.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. John, do we have, um, phone call in there?
That is this Friday.
All right. District growth lives on township with legislature. I have nothing on that, do you know that? How about the ratios, Mr. John?
Two quick things, uh, as Carol mentioned, the student forum was discussed Friday, we're working on the notes, and we'll get them out to everyone, so you have a well-advanced student functions committee meeting Monday, we, so we'll get an email to you. And we're doing all the regular advertisement for, for community forum next Tuesday night at, uh, right.
Thank you, sir. ECTC, Mr. Dean.
Yeah. The, uh, the Career Center sent about seventeen kids to Nationals for the sports conference. And I'm sorry, I wasn't going to bring it with me, but one of our juniors did take a medal in National competition.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, and they have, uh, they took fifteen kids, and eight of them took medal nationally, which is pretty, and the school just continues to perform that way.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Facilities.
And for many months of hiatus, we finally got back together earlier this month. As mentioned earlier, we discussed the existing sports field condition, and its service life, and the fact that we're coming towards the end of that right now, and we need to do a replacement, we've identified that probably the best time to take it along will be this upcoming June, if we can get it into the budget, because it's a very lengthy process, we understand up to ten to twelve weeks to get it in, by the time it moves existing and putting new materials in place, and then how old sewing of the insignias, lines, or leave of that nature. The reason for the need is, this past year, there were a hundred terrors in the carpet that had to be, uh, fixed prior to the football season, and according to Mr. Pitts reporting, he anticipates that I would grow to a hundred fifty, two hundred this year, just because once it starts going, it quickly just fades away because of the photo degradation of the material. The, during our meeting, we took a tour of the Wadding Creek facility, there are a few punch list items we're still working through with our contractor that we're trying to resolve. Of note, at the corner of Shellborne Road and five sixty-two, you may notice pipes and various other road type materials being piled up as the state starts looking at proceeding with the improvements to the corner. The other item at that same location, the schoolhouse, there's a committee that's been looking into the maintenance of the building, they've done some cleaning, and they're looking at doing some repairs to the various elements there, but there are also some housekeeping items we need to address that we, we talked about. During the summertime, the high school wall that we had talked about needing repair, that had new siding applied, the junior high school roof had damaged last year during the hurricane, it was noticed later on, that was repaired under an insurance claim, that was just tacked on to our other piece. Junior high school paving has been completed, and has met with satisfactory grades for what we're looking for there, including the improvements of Brady through the ADA requirements. And of note was our continuing discussion of the bus garage, which Mr. White will be very much involved with as we move forward, because we need to identify our specific needs there. Um, one thing that we looked at was, the Wadding facility has the space that would allow us for a new bus facility, and its location being semi-centralized in the district, and the fact it's removed from any population areas such as residential, and the fact that we can get open access right onto a state group, which is getting another HOP permit, or Highway occupancy permit, probably would provide for a very advantageous situation for us if we can make that all happen. And our next meeting is planned for December.
I thought we already asked the council about that. I thought you think-
We've never-
Not formally, but I thought, yeah, I thought we had, I thought we had an informal agreement.
We got an informal agreement, but, I don't know.
But, it's formal, it's not formal.
On the, on the bus-
Let me play about our set record.
You might remember about six years ago, when I said I wouldn't stick another penny into that black hole. And I think we've done pretty well, you know, with that.
No, actually, that was one of the things, we did replace the siding in the areas that had asbestos, and we had to, because, well, we had to.
Actually, if it was a black hole, you could park as many buses there as you could ever possibly want, but we would have fallen back out.
I think there's, this thing was made earlier, that we could be, if we did Antietam, I, I don't think it depends on Antietam at all. I think we've had a need there for many, many years, because it's the same bus line you're using where I went to school here.
Well, I think it's also, besides that, Bob, is the fact that what we have right now, as far as the needs, are not met by the facility, and the fact that the bus, the garage we have is not long enough, we don't have enough base for repairs we need, we don't have a clean off facility in case there's snow and ice, because that has to be removed from the top of the vehicles, so there's a series of needs that are piled up, on top of the fact that the building itself, well, is being held together by bubble gum and matchsticks.
No real security on the physio's road and, uh-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's not a great road to pull on if you're a bus-
All right, I just had to throw that in.
I thought you told me that was a black street shop.
Um, I do have a question. What was, what was the, uh, what was the anticipated life of the football field?
Eight to twelve years, and we're sitting around ten.
All right, committee.
We will, uh, be having a business function meeting on, uh, October twelfth at five thirty, before the workshop meeting, and we'll be going to the backstage for both, uh, St. Lawrence and Exeter, they're gonna be good.
Both, both be invited.
Both be invited, so.
Mr. Staub, we met November, right? I think you said, actually.
No, it, November, yeah, well, what was it?
November, November what?
Sorry, that passes after, that's since the morning.
Yeah, but my brain wasn't good at the beginning, so. November, November twelfth.
Is that at six thirty or seven?
It's five thirty.
Five thirty, that is-
It'll be before the workshop meeting, that way we can go right into it.
Okay.
Another thing, though, I forgot to mention, on the sports side, uh, on Friday, at least we're gonna try, Dr. Martin, possibly, and Mr. Legath and I are gonna head over to Wilson to check out their new facility. Um, we had talked, one of the things we did talk about in our meeting was looking at additional scoreboards, things like that, where we can generate advertising revenue. A lot of these-
When are we supposed to do that, John, you said?
I think he was talking about Friday.
Oh, really?
I, I thought I, I, I don't know yet, I, but either way, in the near future, we're gonna head over and take a look at it, and also, too, we had kind of talked about, uh, electronic advertising, as far as cost, what we can generate revenue, because when you look at it, and you'll see the numbers, we're up to almost twenty-five thousand dollars in total advertising, just for banners around the field. So there's an opportunity there, now, again, it would cost, uh, some money, at least initially, but I think long term, we can get some money back, so, we'll let you know. On Thursday, for the folks that are holding the meeting in Hershey, for the school board, or that thing is-
Today?
No, it's Thursday. I hope so, because I have to be there Thursday. I'm gonna be on a panel, I'm gonna be on a panel-
Started today.
It started today, well, I'm only on Thursday, I'm gonna be on a panel discussion for the financial literacy.
Of course, I open my-
So, yeah, I, I highly recommend-
I'll attend to that.
Um, so I will, if anyone's there, wait, then.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Martin. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Paying a request.
Gotta pay the bills first. Uh, we have paid a request in, um, X one S, and, uh, it is paying bills from a general fund of one million seventy-one thousand one hundred forty dollars and sixty-four cents, and we want to account the project on of two thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars and my estimates. And as you can see, there's, uh, a lot of social aid placement, private placement, and for the schools, so a lot of our monies, you know, we have to fund these ourselves, and we don't get very much money from the state, do we, after work?
Uh, we get exactly zero. I just have a question.
I'd like to see that from you.
Yeah.
Don't think, don't think, you've told this.
There's a motion that we pray those most.
Yes, yes, please, I, I, we pay these bills.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chris.
Um, I, I saw in here that, uh, they bill for Ivy, and I guess we have a student still at Ivy, at the charter school. And I, I'm just curious, because I thought Ivy was specific for, well, for Ready, and restricted to a number, a certain, to the kids that are dropped out of the-
Within a ten mile radius.
Twenty-five, isn't it?
No, it is ten.
I'm not sure what the radius is, but it's not restricted to, uh, students in the city of Ready. As far as their selection process, I, I really don't have any knowledge of that. Whether it would be-
Their charter had originally-
I think, I think it's certainly designated for at-risk students, I don't know if they need to be dropouts.
No, that, they, they would move the charter.
Right. Okay, oh, so, well.
I went up a kindergarten at risk.
Any other discussion on the payment request? Hearing none, all in favor of making the payments as requested, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Martin.
Thank you, I have two items this evening, one of which concerns something that, um, Don said a few moments ago when he was referring to next week's meeting, uh, the community forum, semi-annual community forum that we're holding at Wrighton on Tuesday evening. As, as you know, and I'm sure the board knows, and some of our community also knows, we have been talking about, uh, a possible merger with Antietam, and looking at data to consider the pros and cons of whether or not the board would want to move in that direction. And, uh, toward that end, at the last meeting that we had a few months ago in, uh, the Antietam, um, junior, senior high school, I believe it was determined that our next meeting would be held after, uh, the Civic Research Alliance would have gathered some data for us relative to potential costs, if we, if we were to follow along a specific road, and combining the school districts, what, you know. We gave them a couple of scenarios, if we did this, how much would this cost, if we did that, how much would this cost? And we talked about combining schools in different ways. And, um, our thought was, because we, we knew that the timing of the report from Civic Research Alliance that give us that data would coincide with the timing of this meeting at Wrighton next week, our thought was to have Civic Research Alliance come in and, uh, present their findings at that particular meeting, uh, because that seemed to be a topic of interest to the public anyway, to talk about the merger, and if we had some new information to provide, then that would be a, a opportune time to do that. Uh, just received the information today, and I think I sent the report to the board, it's also in your, uh, blue folders, I believe. But in reviewing, I only had a little time today, but, uh, I think Dr. Mays took a little bit longer, he and I both reviewed it independently, and came to the exact- bit longer, he and I both reviewed it independently and came to the exact same conclusions that some of the data that Civic Research Alliance used was flawed, let's just say, and based on some assumptions that I think are not true assumptions. So we contacted them, we both contacted them, actually we both did it independently without each other's knowledge and we both arrived at the same conclusions without each other's knowledge. And so we're both in agreement that they need to correct some of the information that they base this report on. So the report that you have in your folders may change, will, should change, and I hope will change. So I guess my bottom line is, I don't know for sure if this company will be able to put these changes in effect by Tuesday and present them at Reifton, but either way, that could certainly be the topic for discussion as most of those discussions are driven by the public who shows up at those meetings anyway. And I would expect that, from what I've heard, that's what people want to talk about right now. So, I mean, we could still use parts of this report, but again, I, you know, he's, for example, he's basing it on some data that both Dr. Mays and I do not agree with as far as our legal obligation to provide transportation services. In that if we are busing Exeter students at secondary level, we're also required to bus Antietam students at secondary level. And he was not making that assumption. And there were a couple of other things that we just didn't agree with, such as both scenarios, he was taking Reifton offline and that made absolutely no sense whatsoever. I think he was trying to avoid transportation costs by, by keeping the Mount Penn elementary schools in operation and taking Reifton offline, but that made absolutely no sense to either layer or eye. So we have, we have a little bit more work to do, I'm not sure if it'll be ready by Tuesday.
Have the ads replaced for the meeting?
Yes.
The ads are out?
I didn't hear that.
The ads, the advertising for the meeting.
They, they have it, and the only thing tomorrow we're doing to connect it is to show that it's the only thing that has the data.
All right, okay. Now, Mike, I really would, I mean, I really believe that that's what the topic of this forum's gonna be. And I'm just very disappointed that we will not have the opportunity to have the complete report there.
Well, I don't know that for sure, Ross.
No, I think that's a pretty good guess.
I think it's a pretty good guess too, considering how long we had to wait for the report at this point.
I mean, I'd be willing to try and reschedule if it was a week later or something, I really think that, that would probably benefit us more than...
I know, we're kind of in... And, and Dr. Mays is, you know, kind of in a quandary too, does he send his board to a meeting that may not even really happen?
Yeah.
Or, I mean, the meeting will happen, but the presentation may not happen at this point.
I don't wanna, I wouldn't wanna release the report though.
No, 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 I wouldn't, I wouldn't either. I, I gave it to the board just so you could, you could draw your own conclusions, but I wouldn't wanna release it to the public if it had flaws in it that, you know, it would be misinformation, would be based on misinformation.
I agree with that, I just don't think we'll be prepared to answer the questions without the complete report, that's all.
We may wanna start the meeting with a statement.
Yes, that's what I...
That never stopped when you...
And again, they could surprise me and come up with the changes by Tuesday, but right now, we're sort of in a really hard situation of trying to determine, do we go forward with this, do we just go on by ourselves and try to answer people's questions as we can, but not really provide new information till we're sure it's accurate?
I think based on track record and the fact that the organization created this document has not made the deadlines, it would be really, it would be very much out of character for them to have this to us by next Tuesday. Secondly, I think to have a public forum without the document would probably waste a lot of people's time in the community because the people in the community, the only topic they really care about, I would say, the majority of it right now, is this particular item.
This meeting has been advertised since August, so it's not that we were depending upon the report to have this public forum. We have these twice a year and this, it's normally around this time. I see no reason to part from that just because some additional material is not available. We may get there and nobody will be there, it's happened before, but I doubt it.
I do, I do appreciate that, but if we expect to have another meeting only a week or two later to talk about this, that would be not a great idea.
I don't, I don't know that to be the case, Jim. You know, you just, you just can't, to be honest with you, you cannot tell with Civic Research Alliance, we had promised this document two weeks ago and in fact, I left several messages and so did Dr. Mays, our phone calls were not returned, but then they finally got back to us yesterday and said, oh, it just took us a lot longer, even though they had promised us, oh, we have it just about done, we'll get it back to you later today. And that was almost two weeks ago. So I don't have a whole lot of faith, as, as you said, in their ability to keep to a timetable. I don't know how, how much the changes will, I don't know how long it will take them to implement the changes.
I wonder if they're merging with other companies.
Yeah, they could be. But they, they said they're committed to being there on Tuesday, but if their data isn't accurate, there's no point in having them there. So if they're committed to being there by Tuesday, I just can't, I can't promise, I have no faith in their ability to keep a promise.
No, I just, I think you were right, I think if, if everything had worked out, this was, this was a wonderful opportunity and a great venue to have that happen.
But I, I agree with Bob, we've had this advertised for a long time, independent of any results we would be getting on this topic. And I think people still want to, to come and address us, we just may not have as much new information as we would have hoped to have had. And you're right, we may have to later schedule another meeting, I don't know if it'll be a week later or a month later. I really don't know. I wish I could say we were a little more definitive.
The public forums have been going on for what, three years now? And it's an opportunity for the public to discuss what ish, whatever issue they might have with us. So I don't see it as being dependent upon this latest report. It's an opportunity for the board to meet with the public. If they don't wanna be there, we'll have an early night. But I doubt, I got a feeling they'll be there and we'll listen to them.
Well, we, we have a, a voting meeting scheduled right before that anyway, so we'll all be there anyway.
Okay.
Well, I, I did wanna say, I think, I don't know where Antietam got this consulting form from, but they certainly haven't given up as far, as far as I'm concerned with their data, even filling the first report. And now with this, I mean, you wonder how they can stay in business.
Of course, we also have the opportunity to make an input on that and we're part of the selection of that committee.
Wasn't even close.
No, no.
By far, by far the best they have done before, they have people, I mean, the information they have, the resumes, I mean, across the board.
One of their problems, and this is an understandable one, is that one of their main consultants, the one that works on the transportation piece of it, it has become very ill and is no longer able to participate in this and that has really been a detriment for them. That being said, there's no reason that they should ignore our calls for two weeks, especially when they promised it would be later today. So I'm not happy with them, but certainly their presentation far exceeded the presentation of the other competitor. And, and a number of us were there here yet. So you can only go by what you see and the knowledge that you have in front of you.
Is that it?
That's, oh, no, that isn't it. The board goals. What's that? Um, yeah, I think, I think there's enough for everybody. Tried anyway.
Might be my...
Yeah. So we talked about a couple of different things, we talked about an academic goal and so we chose to, to weave the academic goals of our strategic plan into goal number one. And basically, the board is there to support our educational goals and that is, and also to, you know, to give their blessing to them or not when we provide them to you at probably next month for the strategic plan goals. Have to, have to work on that. In any event, that's what we came up with for goal number one, the rest, I'm not really sure if we need goal number two anymore. I think we've achieved part of that and I think we'll, you know, that's something that we have to do anyway, so I don't know if we wanna leave that as stated goal. And the same thing with three, but I think three is good to have there about the budget because we have to say front and center that the budget is of any concern and we want to be fair to our citizens, but yet support our mission to provide the best education for our kids as much as we can, we'll have to work very hard to do that. So because it is so difficult to achieve both of those goals, I think it's good to have that as a major goal, even though it's something every district does every year. And of course, the merger question is still in front of us and we need to do that as is the transportation facility that we talked about earlier. Number six has to do with cyber education, we are already doing that and we will continue to do that, whether it's a board goal or not, but there is a limit to what we can do in that area. And then the last one is, we'll data grab about bullying, we plan to collect some data to see where we're at with that. The program that you mentioned, Pam, I believe we did a little research on that, Tom did, and I believe it is the Alvea's program, which is the one that we currently have in place at the junior high. And the question is whether we need to expand that or whether we need to look, you know, at something else or what. So we're gonna collect some data.
Oh, so we have, is that what, Eric's...
Yep.
Yes, you know, I, I talked to my, my daughter just this past weekend and she, she said, you know, her one daughter is in secondary and the other one is in second and, you know, they're both into it, you know, since they started there and, you know, they get hurt.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a costly program and it's costly in terms of the time needed to train teachers and students, obviously. So, you know, I wanna do a needs assessment to see where we're at as a district and what the needs are and before we even wanna go down that road. But certainly it has been effective at the junior high school.
Well, I, I sent Ego back. I totally agree that we need to implement strategies and work on number six. I don't see how that can be a board goal at this point. We've done, I think we've done what we needed to do, we shared with the board, we've agreed to implement the Exeter Cyber Academy. At that point in time, I mean, I don't know what else this, this group can do other than, I think it's Dr. Martin's team's responsibility at this point to implement and work around that. I mean, we know, we know we wanna bring the kids back in, but I'm not sure that we can do anything ourselves. Typically, we have to be able to quantify and whether or not to go, I just think it's, this is more of a statement to me. So I, I can, I'm good with the other ones, I think three or four of them are better only because you can really quantify and we can make a decision, but number six, I don't, I don't think we can measure it ourselves because I don't think we've been effective.
I actually agree with Joe's position, but I would like, I would be curious to know things that we now have at the summer school. If maybe one, halfway through the year and then at the end of the year, you could give us an update about the, how the students are transitioning back and forth and how well there are programs being received. And then I thought perhaps at the end of the year, if we're doing a nice job, if the parents see us doing a nice job, if we could invite them to come and talk to other parents about their experience and then say, perhaps you would wanna consider this program as well. To me, that would be staying on top of how we're going and also, I think we're going to end up talking about expanding our, our program to do other things and we can, we can actually move into that next stage of development for the cyber school.
I agree.
I'm that.
I agree with Joe saying, as far as the fact that we've enabled ourselves to have this cyber academy inside of our realm here by utilizing a provider that we have faith in. I think now, if we were gonna have a goal, it would be, have we utilized what's offered there to bring more opportunities within our physical building that we may not have right now, where maybe a language or whatever the case may be, where we have more of a monitor teacher that allows that group of four or six or seven students that we don't have a teacher for, but now we can bring more offerings to them.
Yeah, and we've already done, we've already done that in one specific case where a student could not fit something that they wanted to fit into their schedule. We've already made special arrangements in that particular case, permitted students to take that course via the virtual academy. And we are doing that on a case-by-case basis at this point when a student has a need for a course that either we don't offer or absolutely cannot be fit into their scheduling of what we try to do.
I don't think maybe we can take it to another level where we look at, you know, saying, we will offer these five things, get some kind of package inside that academy.
One step at a time, but I prefer, I prefer to do that with our own teachers putting their own courses in our, you know, with, and that's true Exeter Academy where it's Exeter teachers teaching those courses. And we've already taken steps to, to begin to do that.
I think it's gonna be interesting if we change our required credits to ways in which we can use the quote elective time, I suppose. And I see us as being able to offer, that's why I was saying expanding, offer courses in that, like the, you know, period or that would work well because you have more flexibility with what you want to see the, the actual, or do the actual class. So I think there's a lot of really, could be a lot of really neat things and we can certainly expand on that.
And I think we need the flexibility, the changing the course requirements, the credit requirements would offer us to meet the needs of our students of all ranges. And some of our very accelerated students just need some flexibility, you know, because at this point, they're required to take too many electives and some of them wanna take more sciences and math and things like that and they end up taking electives that they, you know, aren't necessarily really happy with. And on the other side of the coin, for our students who really are struggling, if, if they can't pass one particular course or, you know, they, they're just really behind the eight ball in terms of being able to graduate on time. And that's the driving force between some kids going out to some of those cyber schools, thinking they only require 20 credits and there's no way I can get 28 credits here. I'm too far behind, I have no hope, you know, but if I can do 20 credits, I'll still get a high school diploma. And one of the guidance counselors, even though Bill had indicated to us last week that that was the reason for a few of the kids not staying in school and taking cyber courses, one of the guidance counselors told me, that's the reason she hears the most frequently, is that they're going to cyber school because it's less credits required. I don't advocate for going down to 20 credits, that's the bare minimum. But I think if we relaxed it a little bit, so if you didn't pass a course or two over four years, you could still graduate on time. Now, you know, I, you still have to have the four, the credits, the four core courses, so you still have to have those 16 credits, but if you fail an elective, you know, you can still graduate with the content knowledge in math and science and English and social studies. That's, you know, to me, that's what you need to graduate. The electives are great and they're good enrichment, but, you know, they're not as necessary as the...
I, I also think that we're gonna need some flexibility with the scheduling. I also think that we're going to need some flexibility with the schedule because now we're going to deal with Keystone, kids that can't catch Keystone.
Right.
And you're going to have to remediate that because at some point, you're going to have to have time to do the remediation.
Exactly.
I do think that one of the things that you are pointing out, though, is this sort of point of differentiation. If you look at marketing and really you are, there, when I did a web search last night, I mean, the charter schools are pretty sophisticated in terms of how they're marketing their services and attracting students into their school.
Absolutely, and they have the funds to do that, thanks to us.
Well, but I guess my question is that, again, I don't, I agree with Jim and Joe that doesn't necessarily need to be a board goal per se, but I'd be curious to, some of the web research is that school districts are starting to market themselves and become a little bit more sophisticated. And so a point of differentiation is that if they're leveraging 20 credits versus 29, I mean, that's a differentiator. And we always try to get people to understand the difference between awareness and differentiation. And so that's a kind of niche of that hook that people are looking at and that's what they're making their decision on. I'm curious as to have we looked at developing sort of a strategic marketing plan that emphasizes the points of differentiation for public education in Exeter versus how the charter schools that are marketing against us, they're taking their students away out there doing.
Um, not really, not really, because all of our, for one thing, we're, we're kind of shorthanded when it comes to our administrative, you know, Don does some public relations along with 16 other things and.
It's a different discipline.
It's, yeah, we don't have, in other words, we don't have a person who's committed to that work and that work alone. That's one problem. The other problem is funds. Advertising costs money. I mean, certainly we use our website, we use the, you know, the resources that we already have, but, you know, it, I don't know how to compete with millions and millions of dollars that go into advertising because schools receive money that far exceeds the cost of educating the children that they educate in a virtual environment. They don't have to pay utilities, they don't have to pay bus drivers, they don't have to pay cafeteria workers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And they don't have to provide, they don't have the mandates that we have, they don't have to provide the services that we do for our students, yet they get paid the exact same amount of money that we are paid for educating that student. And that's the funding problem with cyber schools and charter schools in general. And with that extra money, they're able to, to do a whole lot of advertising, TV, magazines, periodicals of all sorts, newspapers.
But they're not necessarily outperforming. Their marketing is not outperforming.
Absolutely, we're outperforming by a mile.
Yes, I'm saying, we're outperforming.
Absolutely.
There needs to be some real serious reform and funding. We need to at least go to some actual cost. These schools are extremely profitable and what happens with the profit is now they have the, they have the resources to do a bunch of things besides do the kind of marketing.
But I think, I want to get back to what Mike said, I think, though, we can, we can leverage some of the things we have right now because they're really marketing to, their, their population they're marketing to is a state. We're marketing to a very select body here. We can utilize what we have in our website, we can use press releases to talk to our friends in the press that are here every, you know, twice a month about what we do and what our accomplishments are. And then use that to show the benefits and look at those things that we've done as far as accomplishments within the school district. I think there's only so much you can do, but at the same time, I think that we can, with some time, and I know we have restrictions on time, everybody has so much time, we always so much energy and so much money, but we can start to look at how can we pull those pieces together so we have something available on the website that draws your attention in, where we have some way of getting information out with those press releases of this, not just the sports accomplishments, but the academic accomplishments. You know, I don't know if we necessarily leverage what we do academically enough, you know, as well as you always see a football school or a tennis school or a basketball school, those type of things.
Right, but we very aggressively put information out within the community that showed the very marked difference between our performance according to state assessments and standardized tests as compared with all of the eight other cyber charter schools that we sent our students to, that they choose over us. And if you, you know, if you are happy going to a school where 30% of the students are achieving, are passing the state test versus here where 80% of the students are achieving, well, you're talking about 14 or 15-year-old kids who think, hmm, I only have to get 20 credits, I don't have to get up at 6 o'clock in the morning, I don't have to a bye-bye, and I don't have to get in trouble with Mr. McFarland if I skip a class. You know, I can log on at midnight if I want, this is going to be easy compared to what I have to face when I, when I go to Exeter or Wilson or whatever, because every school's facing the same situation, it's not just Exeter. And no amount of marketing, you know, to say that we're doing a better job can counteract. No, I think we have to beat them at their own game. I think we have to offer alternatives that are more attractive to them and we have to beat them in the cyber world.
But that's what I've, I mentioned before, is that's when you turn it around and you talk about what the kids have accomplished or what they're getting in the payout, what the benefit as far as scholarships, what schools will they accept them? You know, what's happening? You know, what are they exposed to, what opportunities they have? How many schools, how many clubs can they be participating in? How many sports can they participate in? How many liberal, you know, how many performing arts societies can they be involved with? You know, those are things that if you look at like, you know, when you're looking at these other schools that are out there, as your kids look at colleges, you're always, they're always thrown in like, we have X amount of clubs, we have X amount of sports. We can do that same thing on a, on a, on a high school level or a school district level, saying, we offer this well-rounded educational forum, instead of just saying, you can check in, log in, say you're here and log off and go home. That whole, that whole marketing basis is students that education is important to them.
Right.
Well, and that's, and that's where we're going to lose. Well, if it's not important, it's not worth it, they're not going to hear anything.
Well, what we're discussing now is board goals.
No, I don't, I don't have any problems with that being a board goal.
There's been some question regarding number six, whether it should be included. Perhaps for years, we had a goal to improve the communications between the board and the residents of Exeter County or Exeter Township. Do we want to develop and implement strategies to market or to make the public more aware of the assets that they have in the school district?
Let me just say, since I started, I mean, first of all, I think that the district does a tremendous job of communicating and I realize that you really have to create, you know, you need some, you need a different type of expertise to do some of this stuff. I mean, I think Don does a great job here. I mean, I, at the hospital, I can't do all the stuff that I need to do, I have to hire people who are.
Exactly.
You know, who have that expertise and engagement. So without me having the knowledge of how a charter school actually works, all I know is I picked up their stuff, I looked at it and I realized that we are today competing for students that, I don't know how many years ago, we, you know, when I grew up, you were in a district, you just wanted to score.
There weren't other options, right.
And so some of it is just sort of looking like, like, I would imagine that there are probably some kids who are going to a charter school, but we don't want in our school district.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Okay, so, so some of that you have to look at then. I mean, who are, I'd like to see sort of the demographics of, I mean, you know, who though, you know, why, why do they choose, you know, who, who are they? I mean, not by name, but, you know, certain type of.
We have, we have printed the list and we have put them, the list in front of the principals and we've had the principals say, you know, particularly the high school, because most of the students tend to be secondary and most more high school than junior high, but it starts, you know, it may be rifled in and up and then it keeps growing. And principals saying, oh yeah, I know him, oh, 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 yeah, oh, do I know him, oh, yeah. You know, and it was that kind of litany. Now, that's not, that's the, I would say that's more the norm, but there are, you know, a few of our top students are choosing that simply because, for whatever reason, a number of different reasons. Either they're busy with other activities and school doesn't fit into their schedule in the, you know, 7:30 to 3:30 or 7:30 to 2:30 realm, they need other options that are more flexible. And that's where we have to step in and provide those options ourselves. A lot of students chose to go to our cyber academy this year rather than another cyber school and simply because to them, there was value in an Exeter diploma, there was value in being able to participate in sports and extrapricular activities with their friends in Exeter and again, to walk down, you know, to get, pick up their diploma at the Sovereign Center with their Exeter classmates. So they saw the value in that and, you know, those are the students we, you know, really want to come back and a lot of those students are coming back as virtual students, some of those students are coming back to brick and mortar, some of those students are starting to, they're in the virtual academy, but they're saying, well, can I come in and take a music course or can I come in and do that? And we only have a few of those, but that's starting to catch on. And we say, yes, you can because you're still an Exeter student. Now, if you're from ABC cyber school, no, you cannot come back and take a course here, you know, because you're not one of our students, but we'll be glad to help you out if you want to become one of our students if you live in Exeter. But we've had a lot of good luck with our cyber academy this year, more so than we had anticipated. The people there are very responsive, they try to help, if the student is falling behind, they email the student, they call the family and they say, you know, you didn't do as much last week as you did the week before, don't get behind, you know, you got to keep, you got to keep up because you've got to have this much completed by January in order to stay on track. And, you know, they copy me on the emails and give me the updates and I know they're being very responsive to the needs of our students and making sure that we're aware of how our kids are doing, which is a lot more than we're getting from any of the other schools that our kids are enrolled in. So I've had nothing but good experiences so far with the Exeter Virtual Academy, folks that are, you know, are manning that. And I'd rather have them here physically every day, but again, if that's not to be, then I'd rather have them in a place where we know what they're doing and how they're doing. And our guidance counselors actually work with the cyber academy to develop the schedule for the student, so we know the student's in the right courses. Other than that, you know, I'm not sure what else we can do, given the capacity and the budget that we have now, because we would need someone to help us to, to do, as you say, to, you know, and we can't complete, compete with them financially, you know, we just, we can't. So we have to figure out another way to do it. So that's where we are with that one.
I think, I think this is a very important goal that we should have because with every child that goes to a cyber school, there's a cost. And do we have 130 now that are going to cyber schools?
It changes every day.
Well, I think that was what I saw as a 130th.
That was funny.
So if there's, if the number of these children are special needs students, then that cost probably is double whatever.
Correct.
So therefore, starting at 130, we're at least 1.3 million that we're taking away from our, our students that are here in this, in this brick and mortar school to ours. And I know you spoke to that today, Mr. Quinter, at the president of the committee on that before PSBA. And I think, you know, even though, you know, we do, you know, put things out, but as, as each of us know, their advertisements go on and on and on. I mean, it's 15, 100, you know, you hear the same advertisements 200, 300 times, you know, maybe within three months, a period. And, you know, as you said, they do market, market, market. But I think we are doing such great things in our school district that, you know, we have to present ourselves, whether it's, you know, would be, you know, many of the, the good thing about the newspapers, they do do a lot of things, cover a lot of issues going on in schools, get big coverage maybe. So I think we have to have that as goal because it is money, it's finances and it's money that's being taken away from our, from our students here. And who knows? As you said, Dr. Warren, I think our goal is that we can have our own, you know, academy with our own teachers, you know, doing, doing some cyber education for our students. And there's legislation going on about all this too in the legislature. So, you know, we need to be on top of it and we need to be supporting legislators. I know, I guess Enric Schlink has something that says, if you have your own, your own school district, cyber school, then you want to go to another cyber school, fine, you go there, but you pay the cost.
Yeah, I don't see that happening.
I don't know where that's going, but it would be great, it would be great if it would go somewhere.
Okay, what I'm concerned about, we're two and a half months into the school year. We've been talking about this two months. I would like a recommendation, or I would like to put the damn goals out. I mean, we can only talk about it for so long.
Well, if we're over ambitious, just go with the goals and we'll be over ambitious and we'll carry.
Well, I'd like the.
These are not.
The opinion of the board.
I'll move that we accept goals one through five and number seven.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Do we need any further discussion?
We'll amend that to read the lead six.
All in favor of goals one through five and seven, please indicate so of us saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is that direction?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. White. I hope you didn't take my statement about that black hole you worked out.
It's happened to hear you didn't like it.
Good evening. This year, we received our three new buses and new van, those are all in service. For next year, I'd like to get two more 77 or 78 passenger, depending on the bidding process, and one more wheelchair lift quick bus. Last year, we took away a junior, senior high route, Rytham route, one at Jacksonwell and also one at Watten. This year, we had to actually add in special ed transportation. For the extra group of schools, we actually have four of our large buses. That seems to be one area where we're growing and that's also your most efficient area due to the students that you're transporting. I have four in our, in our Exeter system and only leave this one that we have to go out to the non-public schools and the other specialties. So that's why for next year, I want to add another wheelchair bus to the three. Still, trading in three buses, we won't be increasing them, you know, but trading in three and two conventional style and one wheelchair lift quick bus.
So how many of these wheelchair, lift quick buses are needed?
Uh, right now, we have six. We always need one as a spare. Because if one breaks down and you can't tell a wheelchair student, we can't transport you.
So were you saying that we had more, more wheelchair students this year than?
Not specifically wheelchair students, special needs students, students who can't travel on the regular bus.
Okay.
Maybe made on the bus. So I wouldn't say we have more wheelchair students, we just have more students who cannot ride regular transportation.
So they have a full-size bus or?
It's a full-size, say 72-passenger school bus. It's a full-size, it's a 72-passenger school bus. There's a position for four wheelchairs, and anywhere from 24 to 28 students that can sit on those buses.
Do we have any vans currently that are equipped with wheelchair capacity? Is that something we should be considering, or some type of other type of vehicle that might be a bit more flexible?
Usually in a van, if you have one wheelchair, probably, mostly could be two other students and eight. Years ago, when we first started in wheelchairs, we had the smaller type wheelchair buses, and economically, they were nightmares. They didn't last very long. The wheelchair lift itself is very heavy. And I just found out that actually using the conventional style and the full size, besides having the capacity to hold four wheelchairs and other students, it just lasts longer.
I see you're trading in 90-seat buses and getting 78-seats.
Yes. We started with that.
Is that what the enrollment going down, we can be, save money with smaller buses?
Yes. With, a couple of years ago, I heard you complain, if you remember, about the emissions. And that in 2007, you know, we were blessed with a $7,500 increase just for emissions, and then it happened in 2010 again. So, in that short period, it's $15,000 just to meet EPA's emissions, and basically, they really ruined the dependability of the recent mode. A pusher now would probably run $120,000. And in that time period, Thomas came out with the 81-passenger, which was close. So, we were doing that, but now with our enrollment declining, yes, we can go to the 77, 78-passenger, try to get more competitive bidding, because the 81 was exclusive to Thomas. If you remember, last year, we actually redid. I have the right to spec better this year, that the others can meet the specs, and try to get some good competitive bidding.
Great, thanks.
How many miles would the average trade-in bus have?
That would depend roughly just, they're usually anywhere between 100, 130,000, although, as you can see, I do have a mileage sheet with what all the mileage have. I have a fleet of information, and that has current mileage, but then I have the mileage that the buses actually ran last year. The pushers, the 90-passengers, we're not only going to as long as what we normally would. Maintenance is very expensive on those. So, we are, after their 10-year period, we are trading those out. They, when our enrollment was growing at 100 students per year, they definitely helped us meet that need without putting on a lot more routes and adding actually more buses. That time is fast, so.
The reason I ask is, I'm not in the habit of asking truckers this usually, but, you know, sometimes I'll engage in a conversation with one, and it seems as though the trucks with those diesel engines, and I realize there's a difference there. I mean, they're talking about running those trucks a billion miles, but the maintenance on a bus is prohibitive beginning somewhere around 100, 150?
We have, our bus 54 has 154,001, and that has been very good. Unlike over-the-road tractor trailers, ours is all stopping there, which is very hard on the bus. And usually, we try to keep a bus 15 years, that's probably, that's usually what our replacement is. In that time, tracking again which route the bus is actually going, we'd like to get 120,000 miles on them. Some of these pushers aren't going to have that. Mainly because they aren't the bus that we can put on the rural routes, which are longer geographic routes, they're more in the populated areas, and so, over their life span, they're just not appearing at that many miles.
And what happens to the buses if you trade in?
That is up to the supplier, they try to resell.
So, they could be running in a Wilson School District or a Twin Valley School District?
Yeah. A lot of times, they'll leave them south, South America. Now, someone like, the local districts around here would not be buying a 10 to 15-year old bus. A church route, Mike?
Mr. Wegman, isn't there also provision where you start losing state monies if we're running the buses too long?
Well, the reimbursement is for a 10-year period. So, we have the 10-year period, you're not getting reimbursement for your purchase of that bus, but it's paid for.
So, how many miles, are we still going 680,000 miles?
Actually, last year, we were under that. It was 574, it was 575 miles. Now, we did take away route last year, but it was different places, redid some of the non-public things. A lot of that will depend on special needs, which are some of the vans, how far away you have to go. So, last year turned out to be a pretty good year, but the previous year before that was 622,000 miles. I know it wasn't all from just taking a route away.
Do we budget for them?
Usually use a reserve for it.
Well, this year, we included the general fund budget, we paid for the general fund. So, the board gives the go-ahead to direct to write the specifications and then advertise for bids, that will include again in the general fund budget. But you can purchase them out of the capital reserve, which we did for many years. This 13, 14 years, the first year, they've included in general fund.
Are you suggesting we put it in the general fund this year?
If we're committed to keeping a district in operation, which I think greatly are for the long term, it needs to be aligned in the general fund.
So, the information I gave is, is there any questions that anyone has? I have student information, and student information is what the information actually is implied for the state report, the number of students that we transport. Student has to be on the bus one day to be counted, so. There's a school directory, the schools that we are transporting to this year, the bus route driver assignment, kind of gives you an idea of what schools are grouped together, non-public, special needs.
I have one need to, shall we direct Mr. Wegman to pursue the purchase of these three vehicles?
So, move.
Motion, for second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have one question. What hazardous transportation, total hazardous transportation?
Hazardous transportation, start with elementary. Elementary, the state standard is you walk to school up to a mile and a half. Secondary schools, it's up to two miles. If you live closer, within the mile and a half or two miles, and the state deems it is a hazardous walking route, not us, not the parents, the state deems it, then you can transport them and get reimbursement for that student.
We have motion pending. There's no further discussion on favor of authorizing advertising for bids on the two 78-passenger buses and one wheelchair bus? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Appalled, motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for everything.
Is there any other business to come before the board? Motion, please, turn.
So, move.